I can do that. All right, good evening, everyone. How's everybody this evening? Are you ready to change the face of the Talbot County Council? All right. All right, so I want to ask, did anyone get the message about the FBI and the Russian and pulling out your plug in your router and restarting all of that?
Oh yeah.
Okay, how many people did it? Okay, not everybody. I want to tell you that the threat is real and you need to do that when you go home, okay? So tonight, I'm going to focus on my experience and expertise and tell you how I know that. So I was at NSA this week at a briefing. And the first thing that they told us was that the threat is real. It is true, well, was real. And that we need to pull our, unplug our router because there is Russians that have been able to get into some of their routers. So that's been the issue. So that is true, and I wanted to share that with all of you today. But I say that to bring me to, I am experienced and qualified to serve on the county council. I've spent 16 years in government, and I most recently served as the Economic Development Director in Dorchester. I've been a business owner in Talbot County, and I'm connected throughout the state of Maryland. And why is that important? Although all politics is local, we know that, but it's also important to be connected throughout the state of Maryland. So what I just told you about NSA, that brings me back to experience. So you want to have somebody that is connected to the state of Maryland and connected to our leaders throughout the state. Because together, we can establish partnerships and relationships to make sure that we're getting some of the funding from our state leaders here, right here, at home, and other types of partnerships as well. That's valuable to being a county council representative. In addition to that, I have a nonprofit here in Talbot County where I'm focused on education. Our nonprofit is in the schools, Easton Middle School, every week, teaching girls in sixth grade social skills and soft skills that we hear that the businesses need, not only in this community, but nationwide, basically. So we teach them everything from economic development, workforce development, how to apply for jobs, how to dress, what not to wear, everything, you name it. And that is so important. And we have seen a tremendous change in these girls and the value of the partnership between Talbot County Public Schools and the Foundation of Hope. So I am fully vested in our community, and it's shown through the partnerships and the community efforts that I lead here in Talbot County. So my platform consists of economic development, education, and the environment. Economic development because that's what I do. That's my passion. That is what I do. This morning, I had, I started my day with meeting with a team from Israel. Israel is looking, they have a great technology in Israel, they're growing technology companies, they're looking to partner with the state of Maryland and bring that into the United States. So, with that, I didn't do good with time on today, but I asked for your vote on June the 26th, and I am the first name on the ballot, so make sure you check that first name. Thank you for your time.
I want to start by thanking you. Because you are the people who are putting our signs in your yards, putting our bumper stickers on your bumpers, making donations, keeping this place running, talking to your friends. We may be the ones up here in the front, but none of us are going to succeed without the support of all of you. So I'd like to invite my fellow candidates to join me in applauding you. I got into this race for two reasons. One, because I strongly and deeply feel that it's time for us to start building bridges to one another instead of reinforcing the walls between us. And I also feel strongly that we need a more connected community. We need to be connected with one another across our various socio-economic, racial, religious, geographical boundaries. And perhaps more than anything, we need a government, a local government, that is connected with the people that they serve and that is proactive in informing and involving us in decision-making. These are not new passions. I've been working in the areas of building bridges and making connections for over 30 years in a wide range of different settings, ranging from international interfaith peacemaking retreats to making a blended family out of a new husband and two teenage stepchildren. That one was harder. Here in the community, I've been working in interfaith settings for a long time. I'm the Secretary of the Talbot Association of Clergy and Laity, but I've been teaching interfaith classes here for nearly 20 years. If you can sit down and get Jews and various forms of Christians and the occasional Buddhist to sit down and talk about Genesis or Exodus together and play nicely, you can build bridges. I also have been spending a lot of time reaching out to other parts of the community, getting active in other parts of the community. I'm deeply honored to serve on the Frederick Douglass Bicentennial Committee, and I've been a long-term supporter and worker for Talbot County Empty Balls. Now, for many of you, you've heard me here before. I've been showing up and talking with you and listening to your collective wisdom, and I've learned a lot. And for those of you who've been here, you know my priorities, but there's a lot of new faces, which is the best. So my four priorities are that we need an economy that is strong and fair and sustainable in which no one is expendable. We need to support public education. Every one of our children deserves a first-rate education, and our teachers deserve to be paid fairly and competitively so we can retain them. I'm a strong supporter of protecting our waterways, conserving our countryside, and preparing for the changes that will come with sea level rise. And that are going to be, they're going to have a big impact on our community. And last, but certainly not least, I'm committed to working across every boundary to build a safe and welcoming community in which we learn how to treat each other with mutual respect and with mutual responsibility. So here we are, three weeks from the primary. And we all, we have an embarrassment of riches, as they say. We all have difficult choices to make. Only five of us can go forward. So I want to, I want to invite you as we, as you go forward and begin making your decisions, that you consider the following. We need people who are able to not just legislate, but also educate and inspire. We need people who are able to, who are, who don't just have experience, but we also need new perspectives and fresh voices. And we need not just people who can get the job done, but people who can win in November. So I want to close by asking you to join me on June 26th, or earlier, in, so joining me in voting for me on June 26th. Thank you.
That's my name's Robin Page, and I, my family and I have been in Talbot County for 34 years, and I'm the proud parent of two graduates of the Talbot County School System who are contributing members of society, and they vote, and I couldn't be happier than, I have worked at the hospital, I'm a nurse, for 20 years. I'm, the reason I'm doing this is I'm your stealth candidate because nobody knows who I am. My priorities are the schools. I feel as though a good school system is a foundation for a solid community, and we have to educate the people who are coming up, and, which leads to having affordable housing for those people as well. It's another thing I feel strongly about. I also feel strongly about the revenue cap. I feel that it's past its prime, and we really need some reform. I'm not exactly sure what it takes, but to me, it's embarrassing that our property tax rate has gone down for the last 30 years. Our population has increased by almost 50%. When we first moved here, I think we were paying 88 cents on the dollar. We're down to 55, or $100, I'm sorry. We're down to 55 cents. Our neighbor counties pay over $2 per $100. We don't need to be that stingy. And our deferred payments on things is starting to show terribly. So I'm for revenue reform. And the thing that really got me going was when I realized that all five of your current county council people are Republicans. And as we've said, at least half, or well, almost half of us in the county are registered Democrats. So we need to get out there. Mr. Trippi, who spoke at the Douglas Tudman Dinner, was very wise and enthusiastic, and the message I took from him was that when we vote, we win. So we got to vote. So take your friends and vote. And early voting is June 14 through 21, 10 o'clock in the morning till 8 o'clock at night. So everybody has an opportunity to vote. Thank you.
But I would like to say, since this is the last time that we will be gathering for this occasion, that I'd like to emphasize my reasons for running for the Talbot County Council. And also to refocus on my experience, my education, my skill level, and some of the issues that the county is presently facing. Good evening, everyone. It's a privilege to stand before you this afternoon, but it's more of a privilege to stand as a candidate for the Talbot County Council. I decided to run for this position because there is a need for change in this county. From my perspective, the council should make decisions for all people for whom they represent. And you simply do this by critiquing all issues and establishing well-thought-out goals. It will be my objective to exemplify an ambition, establishing well-thought-out goals, because that is so important. However, I will not stand here and tell you that every decision that will be made by the council will make everyone contented, because it won't. I will say that I hope the decisions made by the next council will be focused on problem-solving rather than problems created. I have eight years of experience as a town commissioner. I was employed by the state of Maryland for 30 years in administration. I have been and continue to be very involved in and around Talbot County, functioning on many committees, and also as a board of directors for many organizations. I have a social work degree, graduating cum laude, reticulating from Salisbury University.
Oh.
My service of commitment encompasses both the county and also the town of Easton. I have been working in the community since 2009 with an affiliation amongst 17 organizations in both the county and the town. My commitment to the people of Talbot County is longstanding, and I hope to be able to continue this commitment for the people as a member of the council. Now, I'm very interested in all the issues that the county is facing right now, but I will be speaking only on three. Up front and foremost, Talbot County Public Schools. Our children really are our future. We are parents, grandparents, and the like, who want to remain optimistic about their children's potentials. This can become very intimidating if the county council limits the abilities our children have. The council should feel morally responsible for educating our children, morally responsible in providing our schools with the necessary funding, and morally responsible for providing this in a safe environment. If they do this, the students of Stagew and students prepared for comprehensive employment will be produced. Affordable housing. Affordable housing is a stigma that cannot only be devoted to the less fortunate financially. It also affects our businesses, our teachers, our police department as well. If the businesses are not able to find affordable housing for their employees, if Talbot County Public School is not able to find housing that is affordable for their teachers, and if the police department personnel are not able to find housing that is affordable, then they are left with one alternative, and that's moving to the adjacent or neighboring counties. This is unacceptable and risky, as eventually, they may opt to live in that county, which removes revenue from our county. In conclusion, I close with one of Frederick Douglass's pivotal thoughts. Without struggle, there is no progress. Vote for me, and let's progress with pride.
I just say, wow, okay? I think this is the biggest crowd I've ever spoken to in this building over the years that I've been a Democrat in Talbot County, so this is extremely exciting. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Maureen Scott Taylor, and I too am a candidate for the Talbot County Council. I pretty much echo, because we were together the other night, the other candidates. So I'll tell you a little bit about myself and why I think that I would make a good council member here in Talbot County. I've lived in Maryland for over 32 years. I've been in Talbot County for 30 of those 32 years. And I have served as an Easton Town Council member. I was elected twice. I've also served as the Economic Development Director for the town of Easton. And I had the privilege of being the Communications Director for Easton Utilities, where I learned a lot of my background on infrastructure and all kinds of tools for wastewater management and things that you would never think that you would learn. But I learned them all, and it led me to a really, I think, okay. It led me to a really balanced, I think the battery is going.
Your voice is good enough.
My voice is good enough, yeah, because I do have a big mouth, thank you. Certainly for you in the front. But anyway, I think that, my time at Easton Utilities gave me a good background for serving on the town council, and I have a good understanding of local government, and I'm thrilled to be back in the game, if you will, because there are people that remember me from the Easton Town Council, and I haven't been on the council in about 10 years. So I'm ready to come back and serve again. And I look forward to June 26th, when two of us will go, but you know what? I'm not going to worry about that right now, I think, because we've got a great, we have the best slate of candidates that we have ever had, and I think that is really awesome.
Hi, I'm Mickey. I met all of you at one point or another, most all of you at one point or another over the last month, several months or so. We are coming down the stretch. I'm very proud to be part of this group. We're competing against each other, but we're really competing with each other, because we have a lot of the same ideas, a lot of the same philosophies, and all of us will do a better job, any of us will do a better job than the folks who are sitting in those chairs right now. You know, we're going to, and we will, once we get elected, deliver for the average folks here in this county, not just a handful of wealthy landowners who are, you know, or not in a position to want to, you know, raise that revenue cap, but more than a penny, a price penny.
You have a big voice.
Okay, very. But that's what we have to do. We have to make this change. It's not a minor change, it's a major change. And we have to deliver forcefully for the, for the school system. It's very important that we deliver for the Public Safety Department. The Public Safety Department, I don't, I'm going to find out how this budget has impacted that department. I'm fearful, though, that they haven't delivered anywhere near the services that that department needs to protect this community, because they just don't have enough good, enough staff, and they don't have the money to train the staff. We have to give them, we have to put that money in their hands. They're good people. There's Wanda right there, she's a fantastic person, but they need the resources, they don't have it. And I'm even probably more fearful for the, for the Health Department with the opioid crisis. Those folks are without much in the way of resources. We are probably more in a crisis mode than, than those folks are willing to discuss publicly and openly. That's what I'm mostly concerned with. Yes, I'm concerned with, with the environment. I'm a Democrat. I'm going to, if I'm going to err, I'm going to err on the side of the, of the environment. You can bet on that. That's what we're going to do. Or any of us will err on the side of strength and keep that, that environment strong. But, and again, we can talk about developing the economic infrastructure of the county, but that's just wishes more than, more than planning. Why? Because we don't have houses. A couple of the folks have mentioned that we don't have middle-class affordable housing in this county. We don't have it. You can just talk about all the growth you want, but unless there's a place for these people to come to live and start, start families and develop families, it's not going to happen. So we have to, as the county council, we have to take the lead and promote those things. That's promoting economic development, but that's what we have to do, and it's not being done. And that's the messages that we're going to take to the, to the public in general during the rest of the campaign. Please vote for me. Now, I wouldn't differ from Keisha. She said start at the top and work your way to bottom.
Right. Going to beg to deal with you, Manette.
Start at the bottom and house your way around.
Pete Leisure is on the town council, the Eastern Town Council at this time. He is opening an exhibit at the Chesapeake Bay Maritime Museum. Otherwise, he would have been here this evening.
It's a really great question. It's a really great question. So, and what I'm about to say, I don't mean to denigrate any of my colleagues at all. So often, we focus on experience and resumes, and we don't have an opportunity to think about character. I'm debating. I think integrity is tremendously important, but I also think that compassion is also really important. The things that have disturbed me the most from the current council have been statements that have made from, on the official record, that have shown a tremendous lack of compassion for individuals who were different than the people that were speaking, and so I can't choose.
I would repeat everything that Naomi said, but I would ask, my first answer would be leadership. You have to have people who would not be afraid to take a leadership position, stand with it for the right reasons. That's what I think is the single most important thing, that we will offer you, and we do offer, the public.
I think having the ability to listen, because we all have to be able to listen to everybody. We are on a, I don't know, I don't want to say like a cruise, but we are on, are in a situation where we have to be able to listen to all our constituents, because we will be representing all of our constituents. So it's important that we listen as well to what you have to say, and then we'll take a focus from there.
While you're up there, Rosalie, what was number three? You had education, and then you had housing, and, got you.
Education, affordable housing, and also thought about the hunger coalition in, here in town, because there is a huge, a huge deficit here as far as hunger is concerned. You'd be surprised. Go to the Hunger Coalition website, it'll tell you just how many people are hungry, how many people actually use food stamps, how many people who are elderly, who live on a fixed income, even below poverty level. So that was my third.
Well, first, I would like to say that things are getting better, I believe. We've had some recent reports. There's more submerged aquatic vegetation than there's been in a long, long time. My kids went out kayaking, they saw oysters on the bottom. It's very exciting, you know? But we have, it can't be a volunteer thing. It does require, I think, legislation, conservation, it requires a concerted effort on everybody's Most of my ideas are pretty small, you know? If you don't recycle, recycle. Just the things that you can do. It doesn't seem like a lot, but every drop in the bucket counts.
The environment is extremely important to me, because that's the reason we're all here, because we love this place that we call home, and it is a beautiful place to live. There's no question about it. We have to be vigilant and good stewards of our environment, and that includes everything from recycling, and I'm so proud to be, have been a member of the town council in Easton when we instituted curbside recycling, and I would love to see that go countywide. I'm a proponent of good jobs and, and good solid economic development practices, and that includes good environmental practices as well, such as reasonable, you know, footprints and good stormwater management practices and impervious surfaces for parking lots. And there are a lot, over the last 20 years that I've been paying attention to this, it's, there are so many things that have come forth that, that have improved our ability to take care of our environment, and we just don't need to cut corners, we just need to hold the, the developers accountable for making sure that they are developing our county in a sensible and a sensitive way.
I think that we have the basic responsibility for the environment, because most of the, of the economy of this county depends, A, on the bay, but the tourism in this county has everything to do with the, with the environment, the watershed and all that other, I mean, we rely on a strong environment, and if we don't have that, if we go downhill, the economy is going to follow suit very, very quickly. It's one is almost completely reliant on the other. So if, like I said, if we're going to make a mistake, we're going to mistake, we're going to err on the side of strengthening the environment rather than the opposite. I think we always have to be completely on guard to not allow, you know, things to fall through the cracks.
Planning and zoning. Sounds like the most boring stuff in the world, but that's where the decisions that get, get made that are going to actually make a difference. So just to give you one example, there's really great news, there's going to be sewer going down the Bosman-Nevett Road. That's really good, because there were so many failing septic tanks down there. The cost of replacing the septic tanks with the highest level is exorbitant, and the sewer system will help considerably to mitigate that damage. That is really great news, except, those of you who've been around the world of development know, sewer system equals development. And Bosman-Nevett is a fragile area. We could very easily undo the very good that the sewer, that the sewer system is going to do by allowing development there. So we need to make sure that we're on top of the zoning, we need to make sure that we're on top of the planning, and we need to make sure that we're on top of enforcement of the regulations that are there. And that's a place that a county council can have a big influence for, the better, or in the case of the current council, for the worse.
So first and foremost, we do not have a concise plan for economic development in Talbot County. So the first order of business would be to make sure that we have the proper funding to do economic development, and they currently do. However, most of the work that's being done, it's not being done to try and attract companies here. And when I say attract companies, meaning we already have land that's already zoned commercial. So if the land is already zoned commercial, that's already a proper place to put businesses, such as the Technology Park out off of Airport Road. So that is a perfect opportunity to have a headquarters there. As I mentioned, Israel, technology, things of that nature, we are As I mentioned, Israel, technology, things of that nature, we are primed for technology-type businesses. Now, when we attract those businesses, it doesn't necessarily mean that the workers may be from here in that time, because we are regional. So we work in a regional approach. That means we pull employees from Dorchester County, we pull employees from Caroline County. That's where people come from to work, in Talbot County, and vice versa. Until we have some of those trained employees, we can pull from other counties to have those technology jobs. It's been done. So it's something that I've already done in Dorchester, so thank you for the question. I don't know if you know it or not, but Dorchester had the first technology incubator. Why did it go there instead of coming to Talbot County? Probably because they had a better economic development plan. I'm just kidding, just kidding. That was an approach by the Midshore Regional Council. So if you're not familiar with that, that's an organization that's already existing here that helps with economic development as well. So there are things in place to help with us growing the existing businesses and attracting the businesses. It's just making sure that we have somebody that's knowledgeable to do that. And there's also grants to help us too with attracting and retaining industries as well. But again, it comes back to your knowledge and your understanding. This is something that I've done for 16 years. So having somebody on the county council, and Maureen too, she's done economic development as well, having somebody like that, you can basically, with the approval of the other council members, because you can't do it by yourself as one individual, but help steer them in the right direction to attract companies which can help our kids stay here in the county if they so choose.
I share your concern. For those of you who don't know, I was the first Easton Main Street manager back in the 90s, when the Main Street Maryland program first started. We were one of the first three Main Street Maryland communities in the state. Now, the entire focus of Main Street is to keep your downtowns healthy. Again, go to my website, it's one of my points. We are nothing without our towns. And one of the things that I would like to see as a county council member is a better cooperation between the county and the towns, because right now, we don't have that. It's more of a Hatfield and McCoy thing, to be quite honest with you. And that's unacceptable. And, yeah, and those of us who come from the town side understand this, right, Rose? But it is so critical that we need to work together to give incentives, which we don't have right now, but they are available, right, Keisha? There's grant programs, there's incentive programs, there's DHCD. I could name all the acronyms in the world, but there are programs down there. But we need to talk to our landowners, our property owners, find out what their needs are, and we need to work with them to fill those needs and help them. That's what sensible economic development and Main Street programs are designed for, and we have all of them in place. We just need to bring them all together.
Sometimes there's a problem with the property owners as well. So what we see typically as it relates to retail is that sometimes the rent's too high, which causes people to leave, and which, you know, there may be something that we could work on legislatively to maybe fix that. But it comes between, you know, them owning the building and them sending the lease base. As it relates to Michaels, you have to think back that that property was annexed, because it was ag. So who controls the annexation of that property, being a county property and then becoming the town of Easton? That's controlled by the town, so the town has to approve that. So I think we, as Mo said, we need to make sure that we're having regular meetings as the county council with our municipalities. That is so important, and that's something that we did in Queen Anne's County. We would have a monthly meeting with the municipalities, our county manager did, and we'd bring them together so that we're all on the same page, that we're singing the same tune. But you have to look at annexation. That's a big part of why the town is growing. So keep that in mind.
That as we work together, if we could just see the town and the county come together with one focus, and that would be, for me, to just work to try to solve the problems that we're talking about right now. That's all I have to say about it. It's just, it should be a working consensus.
If your county council is working on behalf of average Talbot Countyans, we would be working with the town to ensure that we're trying to get the better jobs in town, not another whole group of minimum wage jobs. What we're trying to do is keep these businesses in town, because when you keep the small businesses in town, you have more local people making substantially more. You replace Ben Franklin with Michaels, and you get all these other places, you don't replace Safeway in the local neighborhood. That's what we have to be doing in cooperation with the town. We have that responsibility. And when your mind is not on the average folks in the town, Safeways just disappear, and they don't come back. Our job is to make sure they come back.
Short-term rentals have been one of the biggest issues that come up, and I wanna put on my teacher hat here just for a minute. So short-term rentals are a couple of things. It can be somebody that owns a home and wants to rent it out for a period of time. It would be less than four to six months to be considered short-term, and they're gonna rent it out as a vacation home, just exactly as you might rent a home in Ocean City, right? So that's one piece of it. So you and your neighborhood, which has been residential, can very suddenly become a Ocean City-like, with people coming on vacation, having reasonable expectations that they're going to be able to do, all of them partying and cooking out and everything, drinking that they wanna do, because it's their vacation, but the location isn't appropriate to it. Another important component to that is Airbnb, so the truly short-term rentals, which has people coming in and out of homes in very brief periods of time. They change the character of neighborhoods tremendously, because you have essentially transient populations that don't have the commitment to the area. Right now, the next step 190 proceedings are finishing up. Once they finish up, they're going to go to the county council. They are addressing this. I haven't had an opportunity to look at what the most recent pieces that they've done with short-term rental are, but they were working to address it. They're also creating a noise ordinance, so that there are enforceable standards for what noise exceeds permissible levels. For any of those things to work, we need code enforcement. We need people to do code enforcement. That's going to mean that we need money to pay for code enforcement, as well as a sheriff's department, as well as public health, so we're gonna have to be looking at ways of increasing money. The other thing, once it gets through the next step 190 planning process, it's gonna go to the council. There's gonna be hearings again. This current council is gonna make the decisions between, before the new council is elected. So if you have stronger opinions on this, watch out for the meetings when there's public hearings on it, and please, go and testify. It makes a big difference.
Let's take a page out of what Easton did with the Airbnb specifically, because we had this problem in Easton, and we met it head-on. And I happen to be a neighbor of an Airbnb owner, and I have to disagree respectfully. It has not changed our neighborhood one bit, but that is because they are owners and they are owner-occupied Airbnb. And I'm totally in favor of that being the only way to have an Airbnb, because if you're there, then you can manage and, you know, figure out what's going on in your own home. I don't like the idea of the Airbnb, freestanding Airbnb, if you will. The other thing that I wanna bring up is, and we did this the other night at Easton Club East, the vacation, short-term vacation rentals, there are companies here in Talbot County that are making a lot of money renting out these homes. They're the ones that need to be held accountable. They need to be regulated. They need to be trained on what our noise ordinances are, and they need to be able to communicate that with their potential guests that they're renting to. And, you know, there is no reason why any one of us, as property owners in Talbot County, should have to be subjected to somebody else renting out their house for a week for a party, just because they need to make money.
I think what the problem is, is that the county has, oh, how do I say it? They have mixed businesses within residential areas. If you do that, of course, you're gonna have problems with traffic, of course, you're gonna have problems with noise. If you change that, if you allow businesses to come within the residential areas, this is going to be the result. So that's something that the county needs to look at, maybe.
I was very impressed with some of the complaints from some of the genuinely upset homeowners who have been subjected to fairly gross-sounding abuse of their privileges, their right to privacy and peace and quiet in their areas. I am suspect of even some laws and rules that say that the decibel level must be a certain level or below. I'm not sure how you prove that, you know, or how you can prove, unless you have some sort of measuring device immediately available before they quiet down when the police show up. You know, there's no way to fight that battle successfully, I think. But what we can do is, if it can be reported, I'm all for having some fairly stringent rules against non-resident folks who, you know, casually rent their place out on a short-time basis to fraternities and sororities and things like that for, you know, year-end parties and bashes. I mean, they kinda know, and they should be able to take responsibility if they do that sort of thing, and to fine people or take their license away to do that. If they have to be licensed, take their license away for doing stuff like that and abusing their privilege, then I think that the things will come under some degree, it'll never be 100% solved, but it'll come under some good sense of order, and people will be afraid to abuse it. That would be the bottom line in that whole scene. Yes. I think it goes back to what I said before. The county council, as a group and as individuals, need to provide courageous leadership. We have to make the decisions to go ahead and absolutely cross-examine and carefully monitor the proposed school budget. But if the school budget is reasonable, which it usually is, the reasonable people doing a heck of a great job, they're underpaid, they're, you know, they work under some tremendous disadvantages, we have to fully fund the budget. If we have to ask the population of Talbot County to help us bite the bullet, what I think the county population is gonna find, that it's not that big a bullet to bite, you know, when you stop and really analyze it. And that's what we're gonna do. At least, if you nominate me, I will be publicly discussing the specifics of how little it's going to be to fully fund something like the education budget. And I am worried about the education budget, but I'm just as worried about the Health Department budget and the public safety budget. We have a lot to be concerned about. We've been ignoring this for too long, and the education part of it is huge.
Well, first and foremost, yes, education is very much important to me, and to answer your question specifically, Catherine. Definitely, we need to tweak, do something with the revenue cap. We know. That's a priority, I believe, if any of us get in. That's what we're gonna work to do. Second, as I mentioned at our forum at Easton Club East, there have been studies that have been done in other areas and other parts of the state that have examined how you can, in fact, get additional revenue, not only through property taxes, but other resources. So secondly, I would like to see a study done similar to the one that came out in February, around February 2017, that was done in Illinois, that gave specific other action items that could be done to put more money into the local school system in addition to property taxes. So it gives you other options. So I would like to see us look at it from that perspective as well. Because we have so many people in Talbot County, and we know that it's not a whole lot, if we do tweak the revenue cap, I think I've heard it could be as little as $50 annually to the property tax. But we have people in Talbot County that are on fixed income. I mean, I know some seniors that cannot pinch anymore. So if we're gonna do this, we wanna get it right, so that our kids have a great future and can compete globally, but we also wanna make it so that everyone can afford it. So I know some people, like you said, that's getting food stamps and need help with buying food already. So we just need to make sure that when we think about it, that we're thinking about it across the board for everyone. So I do think the study is a good idea. It has many references in it that shows us a way that we can have more funding going into school, Catherine, other than the property tax.
I wanna commit this from a couple of different directions. First, I just wanna talk a little bit about the revenue tax cap. So a revenue tax cap means that you are limited in how much income you can collect, right? So think about this. You can never earn more money than you are making now, more than 2% or the Consumer Price Index, whichever is less, no matter what happens in your life. Have a baby? Oops. Major medical emergency? Oops. That's what we have put our county on. If we simply used one of the other methods that are available to protect taxpayers, for example, you can limit how quickly appraisals can go up. You can limit how quickly tax rates go up. But if you do those things, you are working with the actual rates themselves rather than being driven by the revenue. So we can still protect people, right? But we are no longer limited in how much revenue we can collect. So that means if we have more development and more people move here, we can benefit from that by having more money to spend on education and everything else. Under the current plan, under the revenue cap, we would actually, if we had more, to a point, if we had more property tax coming in, we would have to lower the tax rate, right? As we have had to do, we've had to lower the tax rate, so we don't accidentally collect more money, right? So there are many, many ways of protecting taxpayers. This is the most restrictive of them, and it makes very, very little sense. There's also state-based programs that, that can help people. The last thing, and I'm getting the nod here, is if you haven't been in a school lately, show up. The schools have open houses. Education isn't what it was, certainly when we were kids, but not even for most of us in this room when our kids were in school. One of the beliefs around here is that the seniors around here don't wanna pay for other kids, other people's kids, to go to school. Go into the schools, see what's going on, and make your voices heard to this council and to the next council, on behalf of these kids and on behalf of what's going on in the council.
The county school budget is not totally contingent on what we contribute. A lot of the money comes from the state, and you have to work in concert with all the shareholders. And the other thing I would like to say is that dollars are not the bottom line, and I would like to see a lot more community involvement. 100 years ago, when I was a kid, we had a student representative on the school board.
Him too.
Okay, great. I didn't know that. See how progressive we are? But, you know, volunteer to read with kids, get involved in our schools. It's very important, and they're our best asset.
I probably don't need to say it again, but I totally support the schools. But we do also have to hold the schools accountable for the monies that we give to them. So I would like to see all of us, again, come to the table. It is important, education is a very important aspect. It is something that we have to have. It is something that we should actually continue to fund. But there is some accountability as well that is attached to that, I think that should be considered.
Along those lines, I would like to see a better relationship between the county council and the school board. I don't think we have a good, solid, working relationship right now. I don't think we have a good, solid, working relationship right now, and that's something that I am very committed to doing, should I get elected to the county council. I will say this, it's, you know, we're the second richest county in the state of Maryland, and we don't fund our schools like the second richest county in the state of Maryland. And I have a problem with that, because I'm a Democrat. I totally agree that sensible economic development practices, which means your development should happen, or development practice, not just economic development, but yes, we do need to bring in more business into Talbot County. And we have, as my friend Keisha mentioned earlier, we do have the business parks available. We have the technology park out by the airport, we have the, I always get this wrong, the Commerce Park out behind where the old Black and Decker building is, we have the Black and Decker building, you know, the old Black and Decker. We have the space to bring in business, and that's where they should be. They should be in the business parks, they should be in the incorporated towns, they don't need to be out in the middle of the county, in the farmland and in the residential areas. I think the development that we do, both residential and commercial, needs to stay in and around the towns. And that's how you preserve the natural beauty of what we have here.
I think we can do that, but I think, on the other hand, projecting growth without places for average folks to buy a home to move into a community is wishful thinking. One of the great things that attracts people, having lived in Ananorino County for a number of years, one of the things, as a Realtor, one of the things I know that drew people like magnets to Ananorino County was the great reputation of the school systems.
Oh, yes.
Okay? And what do we have here? We may have a good school system with great people, but it doesn't have the great reputation. It's not a leader within the state. If it was, we'd be having people crawling down our backs to move into this community with middle-class jobs, small, bright business people, and we'd be moving in the direction that we all want to go, preserving our wonderful neighborhoods, preserving the culture of the county, the history of the county, but we're not there. We have to provide that leadership from the council level to make those things go from wishes and hopes to plans.
I was wondering how the candidates felt about school safety, because there's been so many school shootings, and I was wondering if you had any suggestions about that.
A very serious subject, and it keeps me awake at night, because I never, ever thought, when I was a kid growing up, and I grew up in New York, that I would ever have to worry about not being safe in school. And it's appalling to me that you have to even worry about that. Number one on my list, okay, is school safety, even before school full funding, sorry Catherine. And they go hand in hand, obviously, but this is something that is so important that we can't ignore it, and I'm so glad you brought it up, because I want to see us work together with our Health Department, with our Public Safety, with our staff at schools. They have to be able to identify a problem before it is too late. And they need training in mental health and identifying a student with a problem. What rings true to me is every time I see something on the news, it's, "Oh yeah, that kid." Well, let's not let it get to, "Oh yeah, that kid." Figure out the problem and intervene before it's too late.
Some of you that may have been here before I talked about this, so when I had my girls' meeting at Easton Middle School, one of the things that they said was they were concerned about the budget of the schools, and they were concerned about safety. So it is real. And I think it is terrible when we have kids this age thinking about safety and the fear of something happening in their school. So I certainly echo what Mo said, you know, that is definitely a priority. I have kids in school right now, in Talbot County schools, my son is in middle school, my daughter's in high school, and it is important that we keep our kids safe. This should not be something that they are worrying about, whether or not something's going to happen. So we definitely have to work with the police, we have to work with Wanda when she becomes sheriff, and everyone else to make sure our kids are safe and protected, and that is definitely a priority, so it's important.
We'll do everything that we can locally for you, every one of us sitting here, and everybody, I feel comfortable saying, everybody in this room cares, and we'll do everything that they can. And that means we, all of us, need to show up for the primaries, for the general elections. Let's change the person who is representing our county in Congress, so that we can begin to get to the people.
I would just like to say that I would like to see a task force in every school with students and faculty on it cooperating with the sheriff's department and the local towns, because I think everybody has something to bring to the table, it's a serious, serious situation, and I feel like everybody's important.
I'm a member of the Midshore Mediation, and not to talk about another county, but it is working in Dorchester County, where they have mediation services there. And it's gotten so great that the kids, if somebody's having a problem, the kids will say to the other children, "You need to go to mediation, you need to talk to somebody," so they are aware. So I'm thinking something like this, you know, it's not in Talbot County yet, but it's something that Talbot County should probably consider. Sometimes children do not know how to speak their problems, but they can act it. And when you see a kid acting strangely or differently from the usual, then that usually signifies the problem. So if they can talk about the problem, to talk it out and get it solved, I think it would make a huge difference.
I think the teachers, having spoken to Dr. Griffith about this particular issue, I think that she's aware, and she works very well with the Public Safety folks, that have as strong a partnership as you can possibly have. I think the teachers, these great people who spend their days, you know, teaching the kids and learning more about the kids all the time, they are tremendously sensitive to any aberrative kind of behavior that they see in the classroom. But when something is about to happen that they don't see or they can't completely control, I worry tremendously about the ability of everyone to cooperate effectively to stop these problems before they explode within a classroom or within a school halls. We're not really in a position to do that right now. And we don't, and that's why I worry so much about, not only the education, but the Public Safety budget. This is where the Public Safety people are stretched so thin on their patrols during the school day, that they worry themselves about being able to manage, you know, emergency situations in a school or somewhere else in the county. So that's another reason why we have to act courageously with leadership to make sure that we have enough resources in these departments to deal with situations, and hopefully, to the greatest extent possible, prevent them. But we're not there now, by any means.
Thank you very much. That will conclude our candidate presentations. I want to thank every one of you for coming out tonight.